That was for you, Tony. This is a game he and I play all the time.
Long time no see. Yeah, how are you? Time being 5:30, the Chair will call the City Council meeting for August 2nd, 2023 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, let's go. Will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Busher.
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Thank you. Mayor Busher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, sir. I will now read the civility pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the July 18th, 2023 City Council meeting and approve the minutes. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion there? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting. So move. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion there? Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we bring ordinance 2023-333 up to the front of the agenda for consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move 2023-333 to the front of the meeting, and we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about moving that ordinance? Okay, so first you're going to just say aye if you are in favor of moving that ordinance forward.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we also need to take a motion, though, or a vote, for the clerk's purposes on the pre-council reading of the consent agenda, right, Clerk? Let's go.
Yes.
Can I get a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion there? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The Chair is now going to entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
So move.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we're going to vote, sorry. Yep. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no. And the motion passes. 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Agenda numbers 2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2023-201, 2023-202, 2023-203, and 2023-322 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any action on any of those ordinances? Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to ask that we review the policy that ordinances that have been held in committee are tabled for, I believe it's nine months.
Six months.
Six months are moved off the agenda. We have a number of items that are held in committees, so if they meet that criteria, maybe for next meeting, have that.
Sure. We'll work with Corporation Council more often.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay. So the next item on the agenda, we're going to go out of order, is Agenda Item 2023-333. That is an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Section 38.15 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to public works contracts and project labor agreements. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2023-333 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Now we're going to go to discussion. Anyone want, have anything to say about this? Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I'd like to ask if we could have Brad Shivey from the Laborers Local come up and explain part of this, the PLA agreement we have in front of us.
Okay. Mr. Shivey, would you please come to the podium? And when you're at the podium, could you please state your name for the record?
Absolutely. Brad Shivey, Business Manager, Laborers Local 477, 1650 North Turkston Parkway. Hopefully, I can answer a couple of questions. One of the things that I know that people have said is that you have to be a union company to bid PLA's. It's absolutely not factual. It's a story that people say to mislead elected officials. I, as a non-union construction company, could bid a public works project 100%. The project labor agreement is so special because you have no ties either to a pension, to welfare, to benefits, or contract, once that project labor agreement project is over. So I can bid the project as a non-union company, hire these men and women to work for my company, perform the work, make the profit, lay them off, pay the benefits, successful project. So when people say that PLA is about only making it where unions can do the work, it's just not factual. That is the beauty of a project labor agreement. We have in this city currently contractors doing work for the state of Illinois that are not signatory contractors. They work as construction managers, and they are doing $100 million jobs within this community. They hire these men and women so they get the best trained and the most motivated, and they get local citizens. They build these projects, and then those companies make those profits, and they go back to where they're from. So when people say this is all about us making it be union, and it's all about the unions, and I'm not talking about anyone here, it's stories that have come up recently from some of the contractors. It's just absolutely not factual. But more importantly, is this isn't about a union. This is about them. When it's 11:30 at night, and we suffer from storm, and when these men and women left their jobs, not just Springfield, but Sherman and Rockton and all of the different places that they go to, they do that because they're part of this community. This ordinance memorializes that, that their dedication to this community matters, that the diversity you see behind me matters. At one time, I would agree with the Alderman that the diversity was lacking. I was a huge proponent of it. Matter of fact, I was the first union representative on the Minority Oversight Committee that was established when we did the power plant project. Because I brought these things to light. I still do. I'm not always applauded for it, but it is the right thing. It is noble. But the fact is, this evening is about working men and women to guarantee that they get their wages. It guarantees that the contractors follow the law. It guarantees that they have insurance when they take their children or their wives or their husbands to the hospital. And it guarantees that they are part of the economic engine of this community. They buy houses. They send their kids to college. They buy cars. They go to restaurants. They buy clothes. All of those things keep this community moving forward. So when people say PLA is about a union, no, it isn't. It's not about me. It's about them, every one of these individuals. And just as a, as a point to that, and they don't know I was going to do this, but just as a point, I don't need you to stand up, but if you deployed on an LDRT deployment, an Indy of the trades, please raise your hand. That's for free, at their risk. They are part of this community. We have three PLA's that this city is doing currently, right now. No one said a word about it. There's three fire station PLA's going. The difference in what you would pass this evening is the PLA from this day forward will have mandatory minority language. The three PLA's you're working under right now have none. None. No diversity language whatsoever. This takes care of that these individuals who are on these projects look like the community, and they have a better life. That is what we're supposed to do. We should have a noble cause. We should pass laws to guarantee that those that come after us don't have it as hard as we do, and that they can take care of theirs like we all hope to do. You know, I know it's cliche, but we do want to live the American dream. I didn't go to college. I have a high school education. I came home from the military. I could not find a job. And I got into the trades, and I've been blessed to be many of these individual spokespersons for 24 years. If it wasn't for organized labor, I wouldn't have the lifestyle that I have today. We are part of this community. We are a big foundation of this community. They're here tonight as volunteers, in case anyone's asking. They all worked today. You can look. Look at the dirt. Look at the mud. They all worked today, and a lot harder than I did. The fact is, they're here because it's important to their family. It's important that when men and women work on capital projects, we guarantee that they have a living wage. We guarantee that the wages they're supposed to get, they get. See, we've done investigations because we do those things. And we find contractors that have worked for this municipality before that never did pay prevailing wage. Matter of fact, the law says if you do a project covered by prevailing wage, that monthly you must, must, by law, upload your certified payroll on to the Department of Labor's website. It's a portal that the current administration at the State House put in place. When we do that, and we go onto that portal and look for some individuals who have performed work in this community, guess what's not there? Certified payroll. And that's not a shot at anyone here, because it takes time to go and find these things and do that investigation. That's what the labor leaders do for a living, is to guarantee that these men and women, and other men and women, are guaranteed the wages and the benefits they have coming to them. That is what we should do, right? I mean, it is about humanity. We should care that these men and women are provided for. That's why we're here this evening. So when someone says PLA is about unions, it's just not true. The only thing I would ask is, when someone says that in the future, remember the faces sitting behind me. Thank you for the honor of letting me speak to you. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo a little bit. I want to thank all the people that were involved in the, in the deployment that helped clean up the city during the last big storm. I also want to tell you that I have friends out in Sherman. The talk that they, what they talk about is just how amazing and how quick things got done. I had friends that lost their house. I mean, it's, it was bad. And, you know, you guys were respectful, and they appreciated it all. And, and I can tell you that we appreciate what you did that, that couple of days after our storm. And, you know, so it wasn't, it wasn't something that we, we missed at all. And so from my, from my standpoint, thank you guys. All right, so.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you. I, I just also want to echo, that was my point, too, to thank all of you. I was picking up branches not at the level that you were. And it was, but it was really, I love being able to follow along on Facebook. Your Facebook page is great. And see the pictures of how many of you, in the dark, were out there helping your neighbors. I still have people tell me, you know, that they, they appreciate the work, that people they didn't know, that they'd never met before, became neighbors, became part of our, we became a stronger community. And a lot of that was leadership that, that your labor showed, your union showed. And you do this all the time. Like, this is not, this was not the first time you've done this. You, you, it wasn't just Sherman. It wasn't just, it wasn't just our deratio. We see what you do for this community, and, and it is deeply appreciated. And I speak from constituents that I've heard from, so thank you for that. I also want to say to this ordinance, we talked about it before. What we are putting forward is a level playing field so that every developer who comes in, every project that needs to get started, people know what our priorities are in this community, what our expectations are, and what we, we, the level, the standard that we intend to hold people to, so that we build our community in a lot of ways. Building a stronger economic base for all, all job fields is a critical priority for this. For, well, I know, I'm going to, Mayor, I hope I don't speak too much for you, but I know that you've talked about wanting to see an increase in, in good-paying jobs for people at all levels and all fields. And so, thank you all for coming tonight. Yes, as, as Mr. Shivey mentioned, I could tell some of you had come straight from work. And, and just even if you didn't, thank you for coming and taking your time and standing strong for something that I, I do truly believe will, will strengthen our community and will build a stronger, better workforce so that we can just go out and get a lot more things done. And I'm looking forward to voting for this tonight. Well, thank you.
Alderman Don. Alderman Donlin.
You know, thank you, Mayor. I've sat on this horseshoe for eight years, and there's time and time again when projects have come forth to this, to the council, and we've been given little information about the projects and learned that there is no project labor agreement that had been talked about, and then the project goes back to committee, and then it goes, becomes back to council. And then at times, it's even gone back to committee again. And, Mayor, I appreciate you bringing this ordinance forward because it standardizes the procedures and the expectations. I've heard concerns about the quality of work on certain projects. This ensures that the quality of work on projects will be there. It, it has guarantees against strikes and lockouts. It standardizes the terms of employment labor, let alone the minority participation numbers that are of utmost importance to this community. But ordinances like this, when they're flushed out and discussed and brought forward, and we're all given an opportunity to have our say, I think only strengthen not only the city of Springfield, meaning the municipality, but it strengthens the citizenry in all of Springfield as a whole. And that's, that's why we appreciate so much you all being here today, because it does make a difference. You have been there for the community when we, when we were in dire straits. We have recently experienced that, as Alderwoman Connolly mentioned earlier with the deratio in late June. But it's those, it's those times, and I am proud to stand here with you all today, and I intend on voting for this. This is an easy one. Mayor, it is, because it's the right thing to do for the city. It's the right thing to do for our citizens. And I just appreciate it being brought forward and having the opportunity to be a part of it. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for your leadership. I appreciate understanding the diversity piece. As everybody knows, that's dear to me. And, and I've always fought this way back through my faith coalition days and stood for equality, equity, and justice, and making sure that everything's fair. So in saying that, it's, so that is the sole reason, and I guess I can ask you, Mayor, or Corporate Council, that we are bringing this forward is to add the diversity piece? Because if we're at 98% now with public work projects, you mean in that 98% of what we do as a city with our public work projects, these men are already doing, that leaves the 2%. And what I'm asking is, so they bring in the diversity piece and say, well, guess what, Ru and Sean, we're going to now use this diversity piece. Beautiful language. We like it. But it, it, so you brought that to say we want 100% and we're going to give diversity? And we're going to add diversity? Or what else does this do that we have to have it 100%, I guess? Is my question.
Well, well, my answer from Corporation Council's office is we've never required a project labor agreement. Prior to this, Section 3815 of our code said that, that PLA's were authorized, but again, they're not required. This ordinance and the operative language lays out nine different factors, requires project labor agreements for projects over $50,000, and lays out nine factors that need to be discussed in those project labor agreements. As to the reason that it was brought forward, I would defer to any of the, either the Mayor or any of the older persons who are sponsoring this ordinance.
So Alderman, I think when you're seeing the words "public works" and you're thinking of an agency, in this ordinance, "public works" means all projects, not just one agency. Every agency within the city. That includes the utility.
Okay, so, so that's my point. So when, when all projects that the city do now are PLA, is basically what we're doing once we pass this.
Through this, correct.
Okay. If, if we got 98% right now.
But you're using your 98% under the Department of Public Works right now. That's an agency, not the citywide.
So you're changing that to be 100% all-city, and I'm asking, I guess I'm asking why?
I don't think you and I are seeing your point the same way, sir.
Yeah, so my point is, I always know this city, and I know of people who are non-union, and I know that they competitively bid and do that, saying, you're right, Mr. Shivey, that is what they think. And you clarified a lot of that tonight by saying they can bid. And they are being used on, on, this is a learning process. They are being used on those things. Public is listening, and that's great news. The diversity piece is great news. But I'm trying to see what brought this on. What was wrong with what we were currently doing? Maybe that's a better way.
As Alderman Donlin and Alderwoman Connolly pointed out, this evens the playing field, that every single person who comes to do business at the city understands the rules. They're written, they're there, and they can follow them. There is no question. There is no interpretation. They don't have to worry about, do I do this? Do I have to do this? It's already there in the rules. As Brad Shivey pointed out, our project labor agreements for the firehouses have zero diversity requirement. So it lays all the rules out, sir. It's important that when people do business at the city, that they understand what their expectations are.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. I, I appreciate seeing everyone tonight, and, you know, of course, we, we always care about minority workforce. And, and I'm definitely interested in the minority council that you started back and bringing it back in a 2023 manner. I, I'll tell you that I smile every time that I see new faces on the jobs that wouldn't normally get the chance. That's what we want. I, I really don't care if every project is union or not. I care about us all working together, of having a diverse workforce and a longstanding workforce. Because I know people in our community, every day, every time I see somebody, every time I walk in the store, and, and, and people in our community are going to know, every time I walk in Jamal's, there's somebody hunting me down for a job because they need him. And this, to me, how I'm reading it, gives us a little more control to make those things happen, for sure. So we can stop beating our head up against the wall and figuring out how we can get more of our people on the work jobs. Now that we have this, we can call them and say, hey, how can we get better? And that's all I want to do. I just want to get better as the city, and I want us all to work together. I like seeing our people. I like going to, to work and seeing and walking in with people that I grew up with and I know where we come from. So that's what inspires me to keep pushing, to see more of us working together. So thank you. I do plan on supporting this, this ordinance, as it is the right thing to do. And we're still going to talk about how to get better, and I thank you all for coming.
And Alderman Gregory, there are business agents in the crowd from many of our unions, and they are all hiring. I can speak for them right now. So they would be glad to see these people you're speaking to.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Alderman Redpath.
So when I agreed to be the co-sponsor of this ordinance, it was because we've seen too many years where we had to bring things in front of the City Council, and Alderman Donlin hit it right on the head. They'd bring the projects to us, and we'd ask about PLA's, and then we'd have to end up going back and forth and back and forth. We won't have to do that now. Now it's spelled out on the front end that this is, this is what our priorities are, and this is what we need. We need the best trained, the best, the hardest workers, the ones that know what they're doing. And, and what we're talking about with the diversity inclusion is to get more jobs out there in the community for everybody in our community, not just, not just the favored, but everyone. And this is what this is going to do. We had a project that, that went out on Stevenson Drive where they tore down the Days Inn. And we fought that fight for a long time here at the City Council. It was done with, with, with people that weren't qualified. They were hiring people off the street, and they were, and it was dangerous. And it should have been shut down, but it wasn't. This is going to stop those situations. It won't happen again. We're going to have qualified people, be it non-union or union. That's what we're going to have. They're going to know the criteria, and they're going to, they're going to do it the right way or they're not going to do it. Everybody has to be paid prevailing wage on city jobs. And this is why, this is, this is going to fold right into that. So I support this. I encourage this council to pass it.
Thank you, Alderman. And before we take a vote, I just want to say, the night of the deratio, I was in the Emergency Operations Center here at the City Hall until almost 11:00 PM. And then I left City Hall to come find those of you that were out, still working in the community, cleaning up. And you were out till past midnight that night, and then you were up early the next morning out. And I was able to meet crews that you brought in from St. Louis and other communities because you have partnerships. That's what this does for the community. So I just want to tell you how much it meant to me to see you out there, working in the pitch. It was dark, pitch black, and you all were out there working, so thank you for what you did that night. Any other discussion? Okay? So we're going to go ahead and keep the voting, and make the voting open, Clerk, let's go. If those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes, 1 voting no.
Mayor, if you'd just give us one sec so we can get them out, so we don't interrupt the meeting.
Sure. We're gonna just, everybody else that's here for the rest of the meeting can stay. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's roll.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 2023-331. An ordinance approving the appointment of John Michael Lesko as the purchasing agent for the city of Springfield. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2023-331 on final passage.
Come on.
A first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay? If no discussion, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, 10 voting no. The next item on the.
Can come up again and speak?
Uh, Mr. Lesko, do you wanna speak?
Let's keep going. We can.
That was a good one.
I'm just glad he's wearing a red shirt.
The next item on the agenda is 2023-332. An ordinance approving the appointment of Nikki L. Baker as Director of the Office of Human Resources. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2023-332 on final passage.
Come on.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this item? Okay, the voting will now be open. Those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with 10 voting yes. Would you like to come up and speak, Ms. Baker?
Yeah, we were just shocked that Congress didn't hear from us.
We wanted to give you the opportunity to come speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-337. An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the Springfield firefighters, IAFF Local 37, and the city of Springfield regarding the assignment of new and different duties and responsibilities to bargaining unit employees in connection with providing supplemental advanced life support, ALS, and intermediate life support, ILS, care on private ambulances. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2023-337 on final passage.
Come on.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, no.
Yes.
Alderman Williams, I'm gonna, I'm going out of order because do you have an amendment? Or no?
Yes, I think it's in here though.
Okay.
Is it in?
So Alderman Williams has an amendment that he would like to add to this ordinance?
So we need a motion to put the amendment on the floor and then a second.
Do you wanna, I, I was skipping to you.
A motion to approve as amended.
Second.
So Alderman Williams has made a motion to approve as amended, and then we have a second from, who was that, sorry?
First.
We need to hear the amendment.
We have to hear the amendment first, we can't just approve it.
Do you have it to read, sir?
I can.
Do you wanna read it in the record?
I can.
Or do you want, I can read it.
Okay.
Is it, is it this?
I just gave him.
Okay. Is your amendment two pages long, sir?
Uh, no. It's short, paragraph.
It's, 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 the, the written amendment is, is the two pages that you have in front of you, but the only addition is to exhibit a paragraph to, uh, the underlined and italicized language.
Yes.
Okay, so the language underlined and italicized says, "The committee shall be comprised of representatives from city administration, the union, local hospitals, ambulance companies, and medical community stakeholders." So what you're doing is providing who you want on a committee to, to, uh, look to expand, modernize, and improve EMS delivery.
Mayor, could I have?
So we had a first for your amendment. Who was your second? Sean Gregory was the second. So now we're into discussion. Yes, sir.
Well, I was gonna speak on the other one too, but as amended, but, or, but here's my concern.
About the amendment?
Um, this is on the amendment.
Okay.
Um, my concern is, is this was all negotiated one. It's, it's been through negotiations, and I don't know how many times you guys went back and forth, but I'm sure that it has been through negotiations. By us adding anything to what was negotiated, does it go back? And could it, could, I mean, potentially, the whole thing could fall apart.
I'm gonna let Corporation Counsel Mordock speak to that.
So to answer that, yes, uh, we did negotiate this memorandum of understanding with the union. Their attorneys have looked at it and signed off on it. Uh, if we, uh, if Amendment One were to pass with the additional language, we would need to send that back to their attorneys. Um, and it would, it would become a counteroffer because we are adding additional terms to what's in here. So they would have the opportunity to reject this, and then we would have to come back to council, um, with approval or go back to the table with the union.
I mean, uh, that, that just concerns me because, uh, you know, we, we, the negotiate, to, to me, the negotiations were done, and it's basically, it's up to us to vote it up, yes or up, up or down. That's, that's kinda my feeling, 'cause we take it back there, potentially, they could say, well, then, yeah, we'll do this, but we want this, you know? Uh, again, we get back into negotiations. And so, uh, I just, I'm concerned about that.
So the discussion right now is on the amendment. If we could keep the discussion on the amendment first. So Alderman Rockford, is yours generally about the ordinance or the amendment?
No, mine's about the ordinance.
Okay, we'll get back to you, I promise you.
Yeah, so can I throw something in there with Ralph? Should, should we vote on the amendment first? Or?
That's what we're, we're having discussion on it first, yeah.
And then come back and, and visit the amendment?
Nope.
No, we gotta, we're doing the amendment first, and if it passes, then we'll do the whole ordinance as amended. Or if it fails, then it would be the original ordinance. So we'll just do discussion on the amendment right now. So Alderman Williams, do you have discussion on your amendment?
No, I did, uh, the, I thought we, my language took out that very last line. I mean, we wanna do it subject to approval, uh, by the union and the city. That was fine, but the, uh, just, it ended at Spring, Citizens of Springfield, period, is, is what my, what I sent you. The piece for the Springfield Fire Department was not what I put in there.
I don't see citizens.
So.
It ended at.
You wanna remove, in addition, and we can amend this on the floor, but you would also like, like the language should say, "An improved EMS delivery for the citizens of Springfield."
Period.
Period, and strike out.
Right.
Strike out the next five words, and then do you wanna strike out the last? You wanna leave the committee's recommendation sub, be subject to approval by the union and the city?
Sure, 'cause it always come back to us.
Okay.
So you don't want the Springfield Fire Department to have any input?
Well, no, they're, they're a part of the committee, they'll have input.
Not according to your amendment.
That's just, the, the amendment would then, and.
In the union.
In the union, yeah.
That doesn't necessarily mean it's. I'll let you talk, sorry.
Okay, so the, the, um, because you're proposing this amendment, that's fine. Um, just for clarity's sake, um, the sentence after the added sentence would read, "The committee's goals will be to expand, modernize, and improve EMS delivery for the citizens of Springfield," period.
Right.
So that is, that is the Amendment One.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment, Alderman Williams? Okay, my next one is, I'm gonna go in order, sorry. Conley, do you have a discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, and largely echoing, um, Alderman Hanauer's concerns about sending things back to the table and then renegotiating, uh, a negotiated agreement that comes as the result of the city, I mean, quite frankly, losing a labor, um, labor decision. Uh, we, we were, the city was engaging in unfair labor, and this is our, our first step in resolving that. So I, I am very hesitant to modify the agreement for that reason. I don't really, I think, um, the addition of, you know, who is, who is part of this council? I, I think it's, it's important to have everyone that, that's listed here. Um, that said, with this recent strike of taking the fire department out of the EMS delivery system gives me even greater concern. So I, I will not be voting to support this amendment, um, Alderman Williams, simply because I don't wanna drag this negotiation out. I think we've already, the city's already lost before, you know, a significant labor decision. This is, this has been negotiated, uh, certainly. And, and I do think that these decisions should come back to us. That's clearly already in the, in the MOU, so, um, I, I'm expecting Mayor, Mayor Boucher will, um, bring a broad range of representatives to the table. And if that's something that we need to look at later, if there's someone who's lacking, then we certainly, I have no problem with bringing that back.
Gotcha.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Alderman Gregory, do you have discussion on the amendment?
Yes, and, and, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I, I think the, the, the basis of this is, and, and, you know, I, I, I think we need to be careful with saying we lost a labor decision.
Oh, we did, we did.
Just, just, the, the letter, the information said. It, it didn't say come back and, um, it said work it out. I would imagine firefighters have been helping out when need be in, in ambulances for a very long time, even past the point of saying, hey, we, we need to do something different, right? We, we, we can't act like this has never happened before, and, and, and it was happening. So I think this amendment is what Alderman Williams is trying to introduce, is, is to ensure that this, this process is negotiated, um, when it, when it does come back. Um, you, you know, I, I, I think, I think when we do things like this, it, it, it puts us.
Go ahead, Alderman Gregory.
I'm just, I'm just trying to say, I think, I think sometimes we have to be careful with, with these type of things when we go outside of the, um, bargaining situation. The recommendation that I read from the labor judge was to come back, work it out between the cities, I, I, and, and the union. And I, I agree that, um, something should be done. However, I know that we was working on an intercept agreement and, and some different things, um, to, to handle this. Um, in the end, my, my, my biggest worry is that, um, we're gonna add in, um, something, and I'm fine, I'm fine with, with paying people for the work that they do. But we all know that we have pension problems. We got, we got some issues coming up budget season that we've talked about in the past, that we took a stance on in the past, and, and this is gonna add some extra added cost. So we have to, I'm gonna vote for this, it's, it's fine, but I, I have some things that I wanna, that I wanna see because we're gonna come to a point where we have to really have some honest discussions with the community in our city. It has grown, we have a great fire, fire, uh, firefighting crew, team, department. Um, I, I, I always used to hear people brag on that. And, and we have to continue to make sure that we're able to pay for them. And we have to, without cutting everyone else. And, and, and that's the problem that we're gonna come up with. So, you know, we're, we're gonna pass this, and, you know, this is gonna add about, what? A half a million dollars on to, um, um, our budget and, and things of that nature. If we go back two years, I don't know how the, long the back pay is, 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 is gonna go, but it could be $800,000, almost a million dollars on to it. And, 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 you know, we'll, we'll have some things to look at. So, um, I think this ordinance here, or this amendment, was, was attempt to ensure that, um, these type of issues go back to the bargaining table, have a group continue to work on the intercept agreement that we have, and to recapture, um, funding. It is unfair for this city and its taxpayers to, um, do work and not, and not get paid, and not get paid back for it. So, so our firefighters are gonna go in, they're gonna do their thing, um, they're gonna ride to the hospital, it's over, they're gonna come back, they're out of service, and then the ambulance company's gonna get paid for it, and we're not. That's, that's something that we gotta make sure i- is addressed, you know?
That's the general ordinance, yeah. Uh, Alderman Purchase, do you have something on the amendment to discuss?
Just a clarification for Corporation Counsel. I should still be a present on this too, as well as I'm gonna be on the actual ordinance.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Alderman Redpath, discussion on the amendment?
Yes, this is a arbitrated decision that we don't have really a lot to say about. Um, when you interject more things into the ordinance, it sends it back to the bargaining table. This, I'm not opposed to talking about forming a committee for this kinda thing. I think probably might not be a bad idea, but this is not the right place for it. This is, this should go back and come back as a separate ordinance, and, and we do it that way. I don't think we wanna get back, send this thing back to the, to the, to the negotiating table. It's not the right thing to do.
Well. Anyone else have discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, on the amendment. So I'm, I'm kinda confused about the reason why I amended it this way. Um, it's because, and, and you can clarify, so this arbitration and this judge, uh, did they order us to do 1%?
Um, no, they, the.
Did they, okay, so no, they didn't order us to do 1%. Did they order us to do retroactive, to go backwards?
Yes.
They did.
They, we were ordered to make whole members of the bargaining unit for any losses incurred, um, during the time of the, uh, alleged in agreements.
So I guess the losses would be riding in ambulances?
It'd be what was alleged, which was work services that were not being compensated. And, and I'll, I'll advise the council that if, if we'd like to have more discussion on the arbitration or our strategy, we can go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining issues and, and settlement issues. So if, if we go outside the scope of, of this and get into strategy, we can discuss that in closed session, um, which we are having a close, an executive session later today anyway.
We just should be discussing the amendment right now. Does anyone else have discussion on the amendment?
Actually, Mayor.
Oh, Alderwoman Conley does, sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't, I hadn't clicked.
I know people are signed up, and I wanna leave them signed up for the.
Right, right, for the actual, for the actual ordinance. And, and I do have comments on the ordinance. Um, I just wanna be clear, Alderman Redpath, 'cause this, the ordinance itself does actually establish the committee. This is just, the, um, Alderman Williams's language is just, clarifies who should be on that committee. And Alderman Williams, I agree that, I think those are good inclusions. I, again, my, my hesitation is to not extend this process any longer, so, um, I just wanted to make that clear, 'cause you, you mentioned you go back and negotiate a, a committee. Committee's in this ordinance, in the underlying ordinance. It really just clarifies who serves on that committee.
Well, isn't, isn't that part of negoti, if, if, if we pass this, doesn't the fire department have the right to come back? So you changed what was in the agreement we signed, correct?
It has to go back.
Right, so they could come back and, for example, say, we want three members.
I'm not necessarily opposed to the committee or who serves on it. I just don't wanna muddy up the water on this thing, bring back another, um, ordinance, and let's vote on it that way. It's cleaner.
Does anyone else have discussion on the amendment itself? Okay. Clerk, can you take a roll call vote on the amendment, please? This is just for the amendment that you're voting yes or no for.
Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Present.
Alderwoman Nocturiano.
No.
Alderman Carlson.
No.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Mayor, you have six no's, three yeses, and one present.
Okay, so the amendment fails. We still have a motion on the floor and a second for the ordinance itself, which is ordinance 2023-337. So now we'll go to discussion on the ordinance itself. Looks like first one signed up is Alderman Rockford.
Okay, so, uh, we're talking about an ordinance where this, the, the firemen agreed to a contract a couple of years ago, right? Their contract was, was negotiated under the old administration? Okay, and, and it was voted in? Why was this not in the language? And then all of a sudden, now we're, we're gonna pay for it when it should've been negotiated in the contract back then? So I know we can't change, change, turn back time, but where's the, where's the funds coming from to pay for this, this $500,000? Somebody's gonna get denied services. So my question is, is, is it gonna be the demolition of homes? Is it gonna be road repairs? Who's, somebody out of the corporate, uh, budgets gonna be denied services somewhere? So my question is, is, can anybody tell me where's, what's gonna happen or how we're gonna pay for this?
I guess I'll let Budget Director Metzger speak.
And it will come from, I'm sorry?
Fund balance. Did you hear that, Alderman?
Yes, thank you.
Any other?
Nothing else, thanks.
Okay. Alderman Williams.
Yes, uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. So if we're, we're ordered to do retroactive, I guess we, we can't do nothing about it. I thought, was thinking we could just, after we pass this, amended, of course, but that loss, but after we pass this, we would move forward. And from this day on, we would do the 1% and do the, you know, the changes that this is doing. But we're saying we're gonna go back, which I'm thinking in my head, you're right. But we're saying we're gonna go back, which I'm thinking in my head, you're right, 200,000, then we, the pension obligation, probably is enough. Where's these conservatives that believe in, you know, we gotta control, uh, all this money? Because we're right at a half a million, right there. When, when, when we really think about it, secondly, not just retroactive, when the ambulance, why, why, why do we have them? At the rate we're going, why do we have them? This is across the board, am I correct? This 1% is across the board.
It would only be for BLS, ILS, and ALS certified paramedics, but I believe that's every firefighter that we have.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, so, if every rig ain't used, and every firefighter ain't used, why is everybody getting 1%? Because I'm looking at this figure now, going, well then, we gotta only do those who actually got in the fire ambulances, who got, who got into ambulances, those are the ones that we're gonna retroact. Those are the ones that was harmed, that need to be made whole, and all that kind of language. I don't understand how we as a council can authorize to just do it across the board to every fireman, just because they had the training. And maybe there is a possibility, this is the way I'm understanding it, that they could have had to be in that position to get in the ambulances. I, I, I just don't think this is right. I, I think this, uh, ambulances come, I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we even got them now. And I also want to just say, and this is off subject, but I'll just say it and leave it alone, they need to pay a fee. Every time that occurs, and if we're gonna pass this, they need to pay a fee to the city. The ambulance company I'm talking about. I'll leave it alone though, thank you, Mayor.
I'm smiling because I had this conversation with Alderman Hanauer earlier, and he signed up to speak next, so, go ahead.
I, I actually was ahead of everybody, but except for Rock, but that's all right. I do wanna make sure that, that we have an ordinance that comes forward, I'd like an ordinance drafted. I don't know, I'm gonna ask the fire chief to investigate what the, what our charges are, what, what cost we incur when a rig is out of commission, while we take some, we have to put somebody in an ambulance. I would like an ordinance that, that the, that we bill, and I don't want any complaints about billing, we're gotta get a bill, billing system for the fire department, just like on my ordinance that we did, that seems like nobody can bill off that. I wanna, I wanna bill, um, for our losses, and I also want to make sure that loss includes our cost to do the billing. What, what we're doing right now, and what we've been doing, is we've been subsidizing the ambulance companies. When we, they can, they can bring in, and they just do the basic life support, and I assume, I don't know how they work, but I assume that when, you know, we come in, and they jump, they jump, uh, we have to jump in, and I bet you they, they don't bill for basic life support, I bet you they bill for the advanced life support, and they get the money, and we, and we're doing the job. So, what I'd like to do is definitely get an ordinance, and we gotta start charging, and we gotta start hitting them, because, you know what? They will start putting people on their, on their crews that have the advanced life support, because they're not gonna like getting billed.
One of the things Alderman Williams brought up was an intercept agreement. That had been talked about, but that is a separate negotiated item that would be between the city and the private ambulances. Now, if you bring in ordinance, I can't speak to how that would work. One of the things, your billing ordinance, we do bill for extracations, hazmat calls, we do do that now. And we, we do recoup some of that cost. However, with EMS calls, it's a, uh, one biller, so, like, the private ambulances are the billers for that.
Right, Chief, but my point is, is we should bill them now. They, they can get, they can bill their insurance company or whatever, but we should bill them because we, we are incurring a loss. Our taxpayers are subsidizing the, the profits of the ambulance company, and that's not right. And if they can't afford to put, put advanced life support, uh, paramedics on, then they shouldn't be in business. And, you know, um, it, it, I appreciate, and, and our, our firefighters, they do a great job, and, and they're in there because they care. You know, but when we have, it takes a whole truck down, because they all have to go to the hospital, and it takes somebody out of service, and we gotta figure out what those costs are, and we gotta bill them. It's just as simple as that. So I, I would ask that we get a, and I'll take as many sponsors that wants to do it, we'll, we'll, but, and we'll start, we'll start hammering them on this. Because it's not right.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor, um, and, and thank you, um, Alderman Hanauer, obviously, and I agree with, I mean, we've, we've been losing money. Alderman Williams, you're absolutely correct, and that is something that we need to be, we need to be addressing. The one thing that I really support about this, this memorandum of agreement is the fact that it at least finally envisions the city establishing a municipal ambulance service. That we're going to be looking into this, that this is a service that we are going to be looking to provide, because, as you've said last week at Committee of the Whole, it's not just that our firefighters are great guys and, and women, they are. But they have an obligation as the highest level, the highest certified provider of care, to maintain contact with that patient as they're traveling. There are other, there are other ramifications, if they abandon a, a patient, they're the highest level of care. Absolutely, these ambulances should be hiring ALS employees, they should be manning them, they should be paying them well enough so that those ambulances are available for our emergency situations. I have, I personally watched the fire department roll up at least 15 minutes before an ambulance showed up for someone who was having a cardiac incident. That's, that's a significant timeframe, when you're talking about someone having, you know, serious and life-threatening condition. I am pleased to see this resolution, yes, it is paying 1% across the board, 1% is not a huge number. I, I do want to just clarify, the city was found to have violated, I mean, the, the language says, the city violated the, um, the Act, the, the Fair Labor Act, or the Public Labor Relations Act. So, and we've been doing it for years. This has been a long time coming, and we knew this was coming. So, Mayor, I appreciate you negotiating this with the unions. Chief, I appreciate you being part of this too, and coming to an understanding, coming to a settlement that's, that's fair to all the parties involved, but also this forward-looking component of this agreement, because I have, I have asked repeatedly that we consider a municipal ambulance service. Other communities do this, other communities are then able to bill directly. It's not something that's of fire, they're not firefighters, although they can be housed with the fire department. It's another nice way for us to consider making a pathway for maybe people who don't want to go directly into the fire department, but, you know, the ambulance service, getting that, that certification appeals to them. They stay with this, now we've got another path for people who, who know what this job is, and know what, what the, the ups and the downs, we'll put it to be polite. So I'm excited to see that that is actually being considered as part of this memorandum of agreement. I'm excited to vote for this, um, and, and yes, it costs, it's gonna cost us money. It's costing us money because we didn't do the right thing initially, and the ambulance, you're right, Alderman Williams, the ambulances were not doing the right thing either, and we were subsidizing them. Our taxpayers were subsidizing them, and I think this ordinance makes a very good first step towards rectifying that issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Redpath?
Corporation Council, just a clarification, following up on Alderman Williams' statement about across the board. So, so, we don't know exactly who was setting, who's jumping into, I mean, they're all certified, they could be all the way up to the Chief of Police is certified, and, are you? So, so, all the way across the board?
You're in.
Yes, I am, yes.
So, all the way across the board, my point being, all the way across the board, are the deputy chiefs and the, and the captains and the, and the, and the, are they jumping in the fire, in there?
So, so, everyone has, is possibly jumping in there. So, we always send two people in the back of an ambulance, uh, the big thing is, is our people are upgrading the care. So, it's only when they have a BLS ambulance, our people jump in, and so, yeah, there's no rhyme or reason to who it might be on any given call. It could be any person there, so.
But, but we don't know if they did it, I only did it that one time this month, or one time last month. But, you know, and here's the thing, if I go down, I want a fireman working on me, well, maybe I don't. I want...
Depends on who it is, huh?
I swear, I, I want a fireman there, those guys know what they're doing, they're, they got great medical skills. And, and I know people want that, but, long story short, my was trying to get the clarification of exactly, we, do we know who jumped in there this month, or who jumped in there last month, so we don't know. We don't know if, if John Jones jumps in the ambulance every time it comes, and then Mary Jones has never been in the ambulance, and they're still getting the 1%. That's, you see what I'm saying? I know this is a negotiated settlement, and that's probably what we have to do, but it's gonna have to take some, uh, we have to look at this, because there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of kinks and, and valleys in this thing, we need to look at it. I will support this.
Alderman Rockford?
Yes, and, and Chief, I want to say thank you for answering my questions, and also, but I, I, I echo what they're saying. We, we need to be proactive on, on moving forward, uh, not only talking about this ambulance service, the city ambulance service, but moving forward, uh, and also, you know, I, I don't know the, the, what, what the firemen do, if they, if they log calls, you know, at the firehouse, if, if they report back to a chief or whatever, but, again, there's gotta be some kind of record of who did what that night, or, or that day, and, you know, in order for us to keep track, and then in the future, we negotiate it in and say, hey, if you're on a call, and, you know, this is where you get your, your pay raise, instead of just giving 1% to everybody, and you may never see an ambulance again, or, you know, riding an ambulance, so. All I'm saying, uh, I think there's record keeping that needs to be done, you know, be proactive instead of reactive, so.
And one of the things that is part of the labor relations is if the status quo returns, that goes away, the pay increase goes away.
Right, right.
So, so, thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Point of, point of order, point of order. If, if, point of order, Corporation Council.
Is this about what Alderman Rockford was talking about?
No.
Then we need to wait, your turn, sir, I'm sorry.
I can actually ask for a point of order per, per, per procedure today anytime.
He can ask for a point of order and...
Point of order, Corporation Council. If, if we're going, if a member of this council is going to recuse themselves from a vote, should it be proper for them to speak on the very ordinance that they're gonna recuse themselves for?
Yes, I could speak.
So, um, she, uh, she is not recusing herself from the vote, uh, I believe she's voting present. So she is allowed to speak, um, on, on the topic, yes.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to follow up from last week and see if you heard from that ambulance company, because I agree with Alderman Hanauer. We have, as you all know, I sit on Medics First Board, and we have also offered the fire department to do reimbursement if a firefighter stepped onto our ambulance company, so I'm in agreement with your ordinance. But we got, before you come forward with your ordinance, we need to enforce the ordinance that we have with the number of ambulances that need to be out on the streets. Did that company call you back?
Yes, I have a meeting with Corporate Council on Friday, and I have a meeting with them the following week, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for explaining when I could speak too.
Alderman Carlson?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be an easy vote, yes, in favor of this, to me, to me, it's clearly two or three things. First of all, this is a, was an unfair labor practice that we're trying to fix. The second thing, you, you know, we always need to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. You know, if we're looking at two years, it might be a million dollars, or not even that.
Do you all have the fiscal impact statement?
I think it was, what, 500,000 for one year or something?
It's...
Is it less than that then, or?
No, it, it is less than that, it's, total package is...
And, and that's my point, I mean, first of all, the first point to that is, is my understanding, this is non-pensionable, so it's not gonna affect, uh, future pension debt, and the second of all...
That's, that's not true. Corporate Council, do you wanna?
Sorry, I was talking with, I was circulating the financial impact statement, was the question about whether this is pensionable, this would be pensionable?
It is pensionable, okay.
It is pensionable, but then, second of all, um, my mistake on that. You know, we, we're not gonna call it a rainy day fund, but, you know, we have, we have, you know, a corporate fund balance. Our Madam Treasurer shot me a note earlier, we're at about 52 or 53 million dollars, and to me, it's something like this is, is why we have a fund balance, why we have a, have a reserve. It's to protect the people who are protecting us, the frontline people, but most, most importantly, it's to help protect the citizens of Springfield, who we're going out, who you're going out, and, and trying to take care of a, of a situation, so, you know, I'm not gonna say it's only, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars here and there, but with a corporate fund balance of 52 million dollars, and this is, is much smaller than that, this is why we have sort of a rainy day fund, so, for those reasons, I have no problem supporting this.
Alderman Williams?
Well, yeah, my, the Corporate Council gave the answer that got me a little excited over here. But I will say 1%, you know, sounds small, like it's not much, but when you look at what it's covering and across the board, it adds up pretty quick, and then it's pensionable, and then it's going back two years. So we had a million easy. 500,000?
It's not, um, I think she's gonna, were you gonna send it to each of them? I thought that it already got disseminated.
Yeah, yeah, and you, you sent me the 200 and whatever thousand, but, so I took that and I doubled it, because it ain't just for one year, it's for at least two. That got me to five, and then pension, now, I'm, I'm not understanding if it's dollar for dollar on pension, but when you, that's where I'm saying almost a million dollars.
The two is for, uh, twen-, uh, not fiscal year, but calendar year 22, and part of calendar year 21. That's where your two is, and then, moving forward, it was an estimated, because we don't figure the amount. It's based on base pay, and only people present on December 1st of that given year. So we don't, we won't have an exact amount until December 1st of that year for people for this year. So we only had, in your, in your fiscal impact statement, you had what we know is the back pay.
Yes.
And we had what we know is for, or what, what we are estimating for this year. And so that total was for everything for the past year and a half and this year.
And so, and is that taking you all the way up to the, your next contract, I guess?
No, then that would be, no, because we would have budget cycle.
Okay, or up to the budget then?
We would, we would be able to budget this impact for fiscal year 25, come, uh, am I thinking the wrong year, I'm thinking the wrong year on it, no, yeah, fiscal year 25. So, in, in March, when we do all the budget, we will be able to budget whether or not this continues or doesn't continue. So at that point, it would just be part of the fire department's regular budget.
So are, are, so at budget time, we're gonna be asking for more money as far as raises?
Well, it would be, it would be part of their, of the package, it, it, yeah, it would be part of the package if it continues at that point. Think, a lot could change between then and, yeah.
Appreciate you.
Alderman Rockford?
So that was my, my question, we still gotta figure in for the next two, two years possibly, uh, for the remainder of the contract. You know, so there's a possibility of upwards of, you know, five, 600,000 dollars. You know, I know it's gonna be budgeted into the, into your budget, but I'm, I'm just saying, but you're still, there's still gonna be effect, we're still gonna have to...
Yes, it could be part of the total compensation package.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, when, when did we first learn about this issue? When was the unfair labor practice filed?
Give me a second. I heard a date.
I just said, it said somewhere September 21.
Okay, yeah, that's, sounds right, but, uh, let me get the exact for you.
So two years ago, I mean essentially?
Yes, yes, essentially two years ago, yes.
We've known about this problem a long time, it's been going through the process, that's, that's my first question. The second question is, uh, you said it earlier, and I know it's, it's somewhat related to the ordinance, uh, but when did we start billing per Alderman Hanauer's prior ordinance that passed? Because last time we talked about this, I was not happy that we weren't billing. And, uh, we've, we've had, we've chatted about this many times, and it's very frustrating when this council passes an ordinance and it's not followed. That's just unacceptable, so when do we start billing? That's new news, that's news.
We have been billing, um, I don't know when that started, but we've, the hazmat and the accident.
Denise?
Yeah, Denise, she is here.
She works for the fire department, she has an answer for you.
Can you tell us exactly when?
Sure, I do all the billing, so I do all the hazmat billing myself, and the, uh, other billing for extracations is done through a company called First Respond. They get, so, we get 750, we bill 750 dollars, they keep 250 dollars, and we get the balance. Those extracations are only for non-residents. Those extracations are only for non-residents. That's how that was written. Unfortunately, we don't get that many. I can get you that documentation of how many non-residential extracations we've had. So it, and then it also comes into play, you have to, I know this is, if you bring in COVID into that and people weren't driving as much, luckily, we didn't have as many extracations. And I mean, it's a good thing when we don't have extracations, but we do. And so I bill for those and I track those every time they go out and I track them when they come in. And I'll be more than happy to provide you that information on how much money we have gotten back and.
Denise, I'm not gonna hold you to the date, but do you have any idea when we started billing for it?
As soon as, I mean, as, because, I mean, I know as soon as the ordinance passed and we found the company we wanted to use, we created a form and then, of course, that had to go out with all the battalion chiefs and the captains. And we kinda had to train the firemen to, hey, you've done an extrication, now let's, where does this person live? We had to get, we kinda had to train them a little bit on what information I needed in order to bill. And then I worked with the Springfield Police Department to get copies of those accident reports so I knew who was at fault and I could get information that way to help through the billing process. So it took a little bit of time to get the guys on board with filling out the document to help me, but now they're, I I get them when we get them.
And and I'm not gonna hold anybody to dates, but I recall that ordinance being passed, you know, let's just say roughly four years ago. I know it was before COVID.
Probably, yeah.
And when we either, it was either at the budget hearing for the department this, earlier this year or at the presentation we got right before, like in December from the department, where we asked the question and the answer was we weren't doing it. So it's.
Oh, no, sir, I'm I'm doing it.
But but that was, am I remembering correctly?
And if and if you were given that information, that that's inaccurate, sir, I I guarantee.
Denise, I appreciate it more. I know you'll get the information to us later. Sorry to get on that tangent, Mayor, but it is somewhat related.
Okay, we had an answer.
Thank you.
Anything more, Alderman Donlin?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. I think that my, the ordinance that I put together did not just include extra extracations. It included if we went onsite and we had to perform any first aid, anything, we were billing, we were to bill out of state. I think that the extracations, that was on a previous, that was along with the hazmat stuff, I think. But when we go, if if we're doing, you know, first aid and that, that was, for out of town, they were to be, they were to be billed. We will have to look at the ordinance and we will have to, we'll have to see what we're allowed to build. Because that was the intent, I know that was the intent of the ordinance. Sure, as far as medical calls, we also have to follow IDPH rules and. Right, right. So we'll look at your ordinance, you know, what. I I'll have to go back. I can. We'll look at the, we'll look at the ordinance and and definitely if we're willing to, if we're able to, we are willing to do so and recoup costs. Right, right. And I appreciate that. And and Alderman Rockford, you're right. I don't know why at the time we didn't, they didn't negotiate this in on the on the last contract. It it should have been negotiated in, in my mind, because they knew, they knew that people were riding in the ambulances at that point and that would have maybe saved a lot of this, but it it, that's what happened and and we're stuck with this. So, you know, it is what it is, I guess.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? Okay, and the voting will now be open. Those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Oh, he's not here. Sorry. Am I okay to? So the motion passes seven voting yes and two voting present. I didn't realize he wasn't here, sorry. He's a yes. So the motion passes eight voting yes, two voting present. Thank you, Alderman. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-341, an ordinance authorizing reduction of fines and costs owed to the City of Springfield in the amount of $38,505 for a total payment to the city in the amount of $7,530 to settle Sangamon County Circuit Court cases 19-MR-723 and 21-MR-1195, City of Springfield versus Julian Randall and Weedlands for 2321 South 14th Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2023-341 on final passage.
So move.
We have a first and we have a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Alderman Gregory, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I would like to speak to this ordinance and just, you know, just go over the facts one more time with our, with my colleagues. I do want to afford the opportunity for Mr. Randall to speak if he would like to. Or if there's any questions, feel free to ask him those. So to be precise, I, you know, I normally don't write things down, but I wanted to write, write things. So I appreciate everyone today as I dive into this discussion one last time about an important ordinance to our community concerning debt relief on a once vacant house that was falling apart, which has now been redeveloped, bringing added value to our community. This particular house was bought for a mere $5,000 to an unaware owner of the death of repair, as we all have discussed in previous issues, well beyond this one. What is critical to note is that this house was already at the three-year mark at time of sale. It was already there. Why the clock started on this young man and not the previous owner who had it for several years in a in a dire situation? I don't know, but this is the, this is the case. If this owner, as I said before, had been afforded the same three-year period under the vacant housing rules at that time, which I've since changed, he still would just now be making the three-year point. But when we think about COVID and how we stopped and the world stopped and nobody could work and nobody could get materials, this young man continued to try to meet our goals. The fines didn't stop for him. He kept being charged, kept being charged, but he can't complete the work. However, he still showed significant progress. I sent all of you that progress in emails as well as payment of the taxes due on this home. I want to correct any misconceptions last week. Importantly, towards our inspectors, no inspector ever promised this young man anything. It was actually our administrative court judge, our assistant corporation counsel, who made a decision knowing all the facts of the case, what TCOs need to be done, how long it's been setting, this court date. He was aware of all of those things and he still made a judgment of only $3,000 just in December of 2022. We know the climate of 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 our government at that point in time and for whatever reason, that didn't go. We're still trying to close this agreement. The primary message I want to convey to everyone is that our city council is committed to looking at the facts when these type of situations arise. I'm not asking anyone to set a precedent. I'm asking us to look at the facts that this young man was thrown into. Can you imagine buying a house for $5,000 and somebody telling you, hey, I'll sell you to you for $5,000, but you gotta pay 750 a day until you fix it? Nobody in their right mind would buy it. We talked about how this does not need to happen in our city. It only compounds things. It only makes things worse. So with that being said, I just encourage this council to look at the true facts of this case and the progress that we have a chance to make in this community with this particular house. Because I can tell you, we have a lot of homes that are in dire need of repair. And I'm sure after this incident and learning, that this young man will continue on to help rebuild a community in which he is from, as he is done with this house and learn from the lessons and the mistakes and be able to make sure he asks, hey, are you in debt with the city? Are you gonna, are you at the per diem status? Has this house been sitting for three years? You ask those questions. He will be well informed because he has went through this strenuous process with the city. And and I encourage everyone to please just look at the facts and so we can move forward. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if if Mr. Randall would like to speak first. I I just real briefly want to say one thing that we talked about on this council and and I think Sean actually, or Alderman Gregory. We are kind of setting a precedent here and that precedent is that we have a a healthy discussion around around topics like this. Mayor Busher is bringing us an ordinance that will really codify how how these process, this process will go and that and that they will come before us. So we're going to be seeing more more cases like this and and I appreciate that very much. These are conversations that the council should have. And I think the precedent that we're setting is that we're we're looking at each case and and we're taking time to review the background and extenuating circumstances and and how that comes into play with each particular situation that we're dealing with. I was fortunate and I appreciate Mr. Randall for giving me a call and and him taking the time to go over his situation with me. I I will tell you, as someone who has also run, you know, I, my first house that I bought in Springfield was not quite this cheap, but there have been movies made about renovation projects gone wrong. And they're funny only because anyone who's ever started renovation projects knows how painful they can be and how outrageously expensive they can get very quickly. So I do intend to support this and and I do, I intend to support this with the understanding that every case that comes before us will be dealt on its merits on as a case by case basis and we will be looking at at all the circumstances around that case. Alderman Donlin referenced last week some, you know, a situation in his ward. I have a situation in my ward that has actually gotten much worse and and much worse. And and, you know, that if that case were to come before us, that would absolutely be a case by case analysis and and my discussion and my thoughts on that might be significantly different from where I land on this case. But I think that there is a compelling need for infrastructure infill, for renovation of homes that we don't want to give up on. And and there's a compelling need to to encourage people to take a chance on on projects that might be a little bit more difficult and a little, a little more challenging. And this one certainly met both of those criteria. So again, I I understand the hesitations. I I heard everyone last week and and I understand where that comes from. But I I do think that if we look at each situation on its own unique merits, we do have documentation, which I'd asked for, thank you, Alderman Gregory, to show that the property taxes had been paid. And again, Mr. Randall has shown up tonight to do something that not everyone enjoys doing, which is come and speak before a council on and in in support of something that that intimately impacts his life. So again, thank you, Alderman Gregory, for taking, bringing this and Mayor, very much looking forward to the ordinance where we can, we can structure this more standardized. Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
I appreciate your passion on this, Alderman Gregory. I understand that we we always do try to help people when they need help. This settlement, it 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 is something that if we forgive this debt, we're gonna open up the faucets. We're gonna open up the faucet so everybody and their brother's gonna come in here and say, hey, I got a debt I want to take care of. And that's not what we want. There was a lot of debt that was forgiven in this city for years and we never knew about it. And 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 now we're seeing things like this come in front of us. I can tell you that this individual that we're trying, that we're concerned reducing his debt, this is not his first round here. He's, he owes $9,000 to the city corporation counsel. Correct me. He owes $9,000 from another incident that he had about three, four years ago. Is that right in 2019?
Yeah, there was a, there's another administrative court case and demolition case where we're owed money.
So, you know, fooled me once, my mistake, you know. Bottom line is, is that we, I think it's a bad idea to open up the faucets. I think it's gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna have people lined up at the door to say, I want mine taken care of. The Wyndham Hotel still owes us $250,000 as far as I'm concerned and that's, that's never gonna be up, be off my plate. But I don't think we do this. I think we're opening up the floodgates and he's a habitual offender here. He, he, three years ago, he still owes us money. So I think we need to reject this.
Alderman Gregory.
My final follow up. I respect all of your thoughts, but each situation that we have talked about, whether it's old town homes or your situation or even this situation that we're talking about with the 9,000. I'm not asking for that 9,000 to be waived. I'm asking for this debt to be waived because this debt shouldn't be here. If he's afforded the same opportunity and we stop the per diem 750 a day during COVID, if he has three years from 2019 and we take out the year of COVID, he still has another year on this house. This debt should not be here. This debt should not be his. This debt should be on the previous owner whom we never started a per diem on. So we start a per diem on him. Why? I don't know. But this is, this debt should not be here. An administrative court, assistant corporation counsel knew the facts, knew what was going on, and he made a judgment of $3,000. This judgment today here that I asked to be reduced to 7,500, it is our cost. We're not losing one penny, not one. The 750 is a per diem. It's a, it's a, it's a policy thing that we do and we make mistakes with it. And in this case, we have made a mistake. The 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 new owner of the house, if 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 somebody wants to come buy old town apartments and for whatever amount and they're at the per diem stat, per per diem moment and that owner doesn't relay that information, absolutely, I would support that, absolutely, because he has been deceived on the true merits of what's going on at Old Town or what's going on at, I forget what the name of that was back in the day.
We're not speaking it.
So, but I understand. But but that is the, that is the point that I don't want anybody to get lost. The same things that others are afforded, this young man has not been afforded in this particular section. This particular section. This debt should not be his. It shouldn't be there. And and I encourage everyone to look at the facts. If somebody rolls in here and they have been bought a house and it starts on a per diem right when they buy it, right when they buy it, how can we expect them to be successful? That's not fair. That's not, that's not a way that we wanna push homeowners to to do. And, you know, we got all these houses. That's gonna make everyone scared to buy a house because they gonna be scared. Well, you know, this house might be at a three-year or whatever our stats is and 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 they're gonna have a $750 fine that I don't know about and it magically pops up and now I can't, you know, do what I need to do to the house. I think going forward, you know, regardless of how this vote goes down, we have to really take some serious thoughts about these houses in our community, near and far, war two, war 10, wherever it's at, that the previous owner cannot sell these off to somebody else and they're in bad shape with us already. That puts the new owner behind the eight ball. How can we expect people to be successful and buy houses and put money into them and try to help be rebuild the communities in which they're from? And so that is my final plea to this council, to really look at the facts of of this case, this case here. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. I think everybody knows my feeling about debt forgiveness. I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of it. I think that, no offense to Corporation Counsel Office, but that's not where the debt should be forgiven. The debt should be forgiven at the at the administrative court by the administrative court judge. And if he had, he had issues, he should have gone to administrative court and talked to the judge and and worked with the judge on that. Not, when you start getting assistant corporation councils and mayors and whatever involved, there, then you open the door to, you know, perceived funny business or whatever. And and so so to me, you know, my understanding was he didn't go to admin court. He should have gone to admin court. If someone would have gone to admin court and and then there's still a a problem, then then I. If someone would have gone to admin court and then there's still a problem, then I think that that's when they bring it to us. But, I just think, I agree with Alderman Redpath. It's going to open up the floodgates, and if we, you know, we sit up here, and how many hours have we talked? How many hours have we talked about what do we got to do for the weeds, for the dilapidated houses and everything? And the big thing is, raise the fines, raise the fines, raise the fines. Well, if you do that, and then when they get done, they come in and they decide one day they're going to fix it up, then they're going to come in here and say, hey, I fixed it up, look at it, it's bright and shiny. I want it all forgiven. But keep in mind that the neighborhood still had to deal with that. They still, we can't do both. If we're going to be hard on people that don't take care of the property, then we can't forgive their debt. It's, I don't think you can do both. And I'm just, I'm not a big proponent, is we can bring all these, you know, in they want. I'm, it would take a lot for me to vote to forgive debt. If you've gone through admin court, the judge says you owe it, pay it. And that includes anyone I know, I'm not, it doesn't matter. If you owe it, pay it, because in a way, that gives the neighborhood some satisfaction that they had to sit through some of this stuff. So, that's just my thoughts. I understand, and I appreciate your passion for this, Alderman, but I'm, you know, I'm staying where I am on this because I just really don't think that we should be in the habit of forgiving debt. And when we sit up here and we say, we got to find people, we got to raise the fines on dilapidated houses and all that, we can't, that's somewhat hypocritical, so, thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Mayor, I don't mind speaking, but if Alderman Gregory would like to respond directly to his comments, I would defer and go after him.
Okay, Alderman Gregory, do you want to speak first or no?
Please.
Okay.
So, Alderman Hanauer, you said that it would take a lot for you to vote for this. So, I'm praying that I got enough change of mind tonight because I just want you, I think we're missing, we're missing one thing, is that this debt wouldn't be here. He met all his TCOs. He met the things that he was supposed to do. We're asking him to do outside work in the wintertime, okay? Take a little time, he completes that. The administrative judge, from my understanding, the reason why this Assistant Corporation Counsel even tipped this over because Judge Milicek, his appointment is sitting right in table right now, right now. So, that's why some of those things we're going, Assistant Corporation Councils are dealing with this situation. So, it's not like, oh, if he went in the end, our staff decided on $3,000 because of the merits of the situation that he's in. If he goes to buy the home and the guy tells him that it's $750 a day, he doesn't buy this home. If we start the clock on him that day per diem, it takes three years to get there, like now. That's, he's only owned it since 2019, and it's just now started. So, what I'm asking this council to do is look at the facts of this. This is not his debt. This is not a, the former owner doesn't have a debt. He doesn't have, he didn't go three years, and he doesn't have $750 a day. It starts when he buys it. I just don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's right to hold him to that, and he's met the TCOs. He met it by the date that was agreed to. He met those things. So, if anything, what was agreed to and what we agreed to was $3,000. I would love for him to pay that, but I understand the cost that the city has in it with our inspectors and the things that we actually did. But this policy fee, this is an error on our part that we will have to consider. We can't just let people get played out in the community with these houses and people buying them and then, you know, expecting them to pay $40,000 because somebody played them. That's not right either, you know? That, that's what I'm saying. We, I get what you're saying. I wouldn't be fighting to reduce somebody's debt who should have it. There's plenty of houses on, there's a big old building on Eleven Street, we ain't charging him $750 a day. But he gets $750 a day from day one of him buying the property. Come on, how hard is that? How can you put some money into it? As not a rich person, getting charged $750 a day, it's a losing cause. We'll never get houses fixed at this rate with somebody buying a house at $750 a day. I mean, so that's, that's why I'm saying, this is not a situation. I mean, I'm the Alderman that lowered it from three years to one year in 2019, probably a little after this, to one year. So, I am a staunch, strong supporter of people getting these houses together. I wouldn't even bring this if it wasn't the merits and the facts on it. This debt shouldn't even be here. If he has a fair case and a fair shot on the house, it's fixed, it's done, he's not even here today. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate all this discussion on this topic, the three times that we've had an opportunity. Something that came to mind this evening, though, that I didn't ask specifically, I know we mentioned Old Town Apartments, which has been an extreme headache of mine and others for many years now, which I can't believe I'm saying years. But, you know, one of the things that concerns me about the situation that particular property is in is we had some issues about a week and a half ago with mattresses along the property, the south end of the, excuse me, the north end of the property, and weeds growing up along the right-of-way of the property, actually just off the sidewalks on the private park. And of course, the neighbors have had to put up with this forever, it's no secret. But someone from that property, allegedly, I didn't hear it myself, but allegedly said to one of the neighbors, we're just going to keep selling it, changing owners, and it's going to drag on forever. It's never going to be fixed. I don't know if that's true or not, but it kind of, and I know this is a different situation, but what concerns me is that a nefarious and out-of-state company like this one owns a property like Old Town Apartments, and just as we're getting ready to get to a point where something, we're going to hold their feet to the fire, and I understand their present fine is $500,000 plus. It could have been a million, but they did some work, but it's $500,000 plus. That, oh, they just sell it to somebody else, and the new owner says, well, we didn't know anything about this. And then, you know, we're in the position of now, do we forgive the $500? It's a different owner, they're going to fix it up. I think we need to hold situations like that, hold their feet to the fire, get it done. I know we're working on some demolitions of some of those properties. It shouldn't have had to come to this, this has gone on forever. It's been a headache on everybody's side, but I'm very reluctant, as I've stated the last couple of meetings, to forgive debt. And I don't see how a property owner, when a decision's been made, the way I understand it, that the fines are going to accumulate on a daily basis, how does a new property owner come in and not be aware of that? And, or, how does administrative, surely administrative court, when the ownership changed, at some point, before it got to be, what was the total amount, $47,000, $38,000, whatever it is, not tell them early on, because as I stated earlier, you don't just accumulate this kind of debt overnight. It takes a long time.
Alderwoman, Noctrano.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a good question, you don't.
I can let you know that our case was filed April 10th of 2019. We didn't seek a per diem penalty until June 26th of 2019, and then we got our final assessment per diem cost and final judgment on August 21st of 2019. So, the per diem would have been in that interim period after the purchase of the home. And then we ceased the per diem, but then we had to go to Circuit Court to enforce it. And so, we were in Circuit Court for quite a while getting that judgment and enforcing our judgment.
Yeah, this is definitely a really difficult issue, and like Ward 2, Ward 6 has a huge problem with houses that have just been left to fester by their owners. And I don't want us to encourage people to walk away from their properties because that's what I have in Ward 6, I'm sure we all have it. Homeowners, individual homeowners, not big corporations or real estate companies, but we don't want individual homeowners to walk away from their properties because we have really let them have it with regard to fines. These huge fines are a deterrent, right? Like, we want to have a big scary fine so no one lets their grass get high. We want to charge them a lot to cut their grass so we don't have to cut it again. But in this case, I think we are getting some money. He is paying us some money. He, it's not all being forgiven, so we are getting something, and that's great. And we have a situation where a house that was just left to decay has now been turned into a house that can be sold and someone can live in it. That is the shining example that we need to promote in this city because right now, there are way too many vacant abandoned houses, way too many empty lots where we had to demo houses that just collect garbage. This issue, we, I agree with Alderman Gregory, we need to look at the facts of this case, and we need to be ready and welcome more cases like this because we need to be encouraging homeowners to come to us and ask for a break because we want them to do that rather than moving to Florida and abandoning their property. So, thanks.
Going to get you wished.
Mr. Randall, did you want to address the council? You don't have to, sir, I just saw your hand up earlier. You can come up if you would like to. I just don't want you to be forced to.
Hi, everybody. I was trying to let Mr. Redpath know that that other fine, I thought it was wrapped into with this one because I got that home also at the same purchasing time of this one, from the same person.
Is this tied up to the same fines?
No, this is a completely different case. These fines, these $7,530 takes care of cases 19 MR 723 and 21 MR 1195. The case that the demolition case being referenced would be 19 MR 333. It's a completely different property. That is the property at 1710 South 10 and 1/2 Street.
Yes, sir. Have you checked the records? Me and the guy, we both, we went to the county building on the same day. I felt like it was too good to be true, and that's why I'm.
He's telling you they're separate.
Yes, sir. But I'm saying, when I purchased them from them, I got that the same day that I got this one. It was all at the same time. It was the deal that we done was supposed to be for.
So, if we add up your bill, it comes to $47,000.
Yes, sir. But the $9,000, we can, I guess we can do something about that. But I thought that it was all wrapped up in one because I bought it all at the same time. But that's not your fault, it's my ignorance on that. Yeah, I purchased the home. I didn't know anything about all the things. I didn't even know you had to have permits on homes when you get them. I thought that you just buy a home, you fix on it as you go along, and it's your home, you know? I didn't know that it was going to be time limits, and you got to pay for permits and everything like that. So, yes, I did make all the mistakes with this stuff, but there's no way that I was trying to be malicious or run off from my homes or anything like that. When I very first got the home, I spent like a few thousand dollars just from renting the big dumpsters. Those were like $500 a week, and I was taking those and throwing everything out of the house. The house, the roof, the soffit, the fascia, the windows were busted. People ripped all the copper out of the house, all of the wiring. I had to tuck point the foundation. The house just was horrible. I didn't know that these things were going to cost this much money. And then COVID officially came in, and sky prices, I mean, things skyrocketed. The lay, I mean, the lumber was high, just everything was just high. I got discouraged by it, yes, I did. I'm definitely sorry about that. Like, I made a lot of mistakes with this house, but I learned a lot of stuff from this house also. I made mistakes, not even just only with this house, just period in life, you know what I'm saying? But I tried to right all my wrongs. So, whenever I got a chance, instead of just running off away from the house, I came back and I tried to fix the house up. All the way, and I fixed the house up, I got it done, I talked with Robert Hoag. We got an agreement going, I got everything done. I did everything, but Robert Hoag is no longer with the city anymore. Therefore, I mean, I don't, I just hope you all help me, you know? I didn't, I definitely didn't try to do nothing bad or wrong, or the things that I did make a mistake on, I am sorry about making those mistakes on those things. And hopefully, I can get this one done, and I can finish it up. I can take care of the $9,000 that you're speaking on, Mr. Redpath. But I got everything into this house, everything. I exhausted every single option I have, everybody who I know, every family member, every friend, every, everything to help me fix it and get it to the point where it is right now. So, I just hope that, you know, everybody sees that I was just in a bad situation here. And I thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Gregory, did you want to speak?
I just want to say, if, you know, I wasn't aware of that, but hearing that, and hearing that that is an issue, if we amend this agreement to a payment of $16,530 from his fine, is that fair? Is that something that we can live with? This, and correct, pay his last fine, he's under the understanding. It would be $16,530, so I would like to make that amendment.
Is your amendment is to?
I want to increase the amount of, the total payment amount to the city from $16,530 to $16,530, which includes the $9,000 that Alderman Redpath spoke on to cover the other house. And what is due, I think that was for demo, and that would put a grand total of $16,530 being waived from the fine, or payment from the $38,505.
So, we have amendment in a second to adjust the amount paid for Mr. Randall from $7,530 to $16,530, correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a first motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? First, okay. We're back to the amendment discussion.
Can I speak, Alderman Gregory? I'm just double checking.
Alderwoman, I just wanted to know, there was no disrespect to you. That was just more of a point of information at all times. Feel free to ask a point of information or point of order, even when I'm on, you can point of order me too. I respect that wholeheartedly. So, I apologize that you took that in that way.
So, thank you. So, that amount that you just made in amendment, so you're going to be able to pay that before? That will have to be paid now before his house can sell? Is that what you're asking for, Alderman Gregory? I just want to make sure we all hear it correctly.
Corporate counsel could probably do a better job of answering that than Alderman Gregory. You're okay with that, Alderman Gregory? Okay.
Right, so the way this agreement would work is we'd amend the ordinance, we'd, but we would not release our liens on the property, which are in the full amount, until that $16,530 are paid. Now, that being said, that can be made a part of closing. So, it might all happen simultaneously as a part of closing, but our liens would be paid.
Any other questions, Alderwoman?
No, thank you for coming and explaining your situation too. Kind of making me have a soft spot right now because I renovate properties, and I know how it is. But you saying that you have learned from your mistakes, that's the first thing you do when you go buy a property, is come into here and do a Freedom of Information Act to know what you got yourself into and make sure wasn't nobody ripping you off.
Yes, ma'am. I definitely didn't know, like, I was pretty angry myself after I figured out that I had to do all of these things. I thought you just buy it and fix it, and this was my first time, though, you know what I'm saying? So, I definitely know for in the future.
And help educate other people too who are getting into doing this that's amongst us, that's young people doing it because sometimes we don't always. Because sometimes, we don't always know what to ask for, who to talk to, and that's why you have us to call.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I believe Alderman Donlin really wanted to speak. I think he was up to about six on there.
He buzzed in about five or six times, so.
I got a little happy with the mouse this, this evening. You know, I, I appreciate this conversation. You know, I've, I've, uh, I, I've, I've really kept, tried to keep an open mind on this whole thing the whole time we've been debating this, all three times, that is. And, you know, uh, the, the concerns that were raised to me today were twofold. And that was, one, the real estate taxes not being paid. And I'm going to be kind of blunt about it, and please don't take this personal. But my goodness, when the real estate taxes are just a few hundred dollars, uh, three hundred and forty-two dollars, and they're not paid, how dare anybody come and ask for any kind of relief? I thought that was ridiculous. Well, you proved that, that, that they've been paid. Uh, the second thing that really troubled me was this nine thousand plus dollars on this other property. Because, again, our process, and we talk about it all the time, about wanting to clean up all these properties, increasing the fines, like you mentioned earlier. And it takes so long to get to the point where we can demo a property. I mean, trust me, we're going through one right now I referenced earlier. It doesn't just happen overnight. But to accumulate nine thousand dollars to get to the point where we're demolishing a property takes a long time, arduous time. There's plenty of notices. As a matter of fact, the neighborhood always asks, why can't you do something about it? And they want something done about it now. Whether it's gr- long, whether it's grass and weeds, or major problems in a structure, we have to afford, and we should afford, those individuals and property owners their due process. That's the proper way to do it. But it takes forever. The fact that you're willing to include that nine thousand dollars does keep my mind open, and, uh, I will take that into consideration this evening with my vote. Thank you.
So, we were discussing the amendment that Alderman Gregory made. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, so can I get an aye for those who are in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays on the amendment? I don't think we need to do a roll call on that. So, now the ordinance that we have discussion on, if any further discussion, if twenty-twenty-three, three forty-one changed the settlement amount to sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for Mr. Randall. Any other discussion on that?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. I was going to stick with my present vote tonight on you, but the fact that you are now adding in that other, the additional amount, I am going to be a yes for this. But just know, too, we have things that go on in all of our wards, and I'm probably going to take a hit, because like Alderman Redpath talked about the Wyndham. I have a situation where this person is wanting some debt to be forgiven, and this is setting like kind of a precedence and having to look at different issues now. So, just, I hope you really took a lesson from this.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
I, I didn't know if I should buzz in four or five times to.
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you. Mr. Randall, thank you for coming in and speaking. As I said, when you and I spoke, that, that really, that changed my mind on some issues and concerns. I appreciate Alderman Gregory, your willingness to include the other debt that I wasn't aware of. I just want to reiterate, reiterate again that this is, I'll, I'll be honest, um, Alderman Redpath, you're not wrong. I think that, that faucet has already been opened. Because we, as a council, found out that debt was being forgiven, that we had no idea was happening. The faucet has been running for a while. We're just able to now assess what's coming through here. And, and again, you make a compelling case. I understand making mistakes. Uh, if, if we were to only give generosity to people who are perfect, we'd be pretty scarce on that. So, uh, Alderman Gregory, just again, thank you for amending the ordinance. Um, I look forward to voting for this. And again, Mr. Randall, thank you for coming in. Thank you for your time, thank you for talking to me. Even if you did, I think, kind of call me old, I'll live with that.
Alderman Redpath.
Just a point of information for Corporation Council. We are dividing, we're adding these two numbers together, but we have to divide that number based on the parcels, correct? So, the nine thousand has to go to the pay down on the parcel on the Ten and a Half Street, and the, the seventy-five thirty has to go to the parcel at, at, uh, South Fourteenth Street, correct? Just for the record.
Right. So, we're going to be adding in, um, that, my understanding is by adding in that case, uh, this total amount would be a release of all of our liens. Um, so, I would need to check the status of the, the vacant property at this point. Um, but we would try to recoup, uh, all sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty of this through our liens against, um, against twenty-three, twenty-one, South Fourteenth Street. That, that would be.
So, you're not releasing the lien on the, on the Ten, Ten and a Half Street?
No, we, we would release that lien, um, but that would be a, as a part of a global agreement. But that wouldn't be released until we got nine thousand dollars. I, the way I envision this transaction, the easiest way to do it would to be to set all sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty to be taken from the proceeds of closing, and then we release all of our liens against seventeen ten South.
So, you're, you're, you're going to gain the, the profits that, for the sixteen thousand out of the one parcel, though, correct?
That's right.
So, let me follow up with this. I'm not happy about this at all. The, the faucets are open, as everybody says. But I'm just going to say this. Your habitual offender, because you did it on two pieces of property, that's a problem for me. But you did not go to the administrative hearings like you should have had. If, if you would have went to the administrative hearings, you wouldn't be here. Because they probably would have figured out a settlement long, long time ago. So, if, if I vote for this thing, I don't want to see you here no more. I don't want, I want to tell you right now that just, you, this is a tough business. There's people sitting in this crowd that, that rehab houses all the time, and they run into the same problems. I used to own dozens and dozens of houses. I know what you're going through, it's tough. The thing is, is that before you take on a project, and I'm not trying to scold you here, I'm just trying to help you here. Before you take on a project, know what you're getting yourself into. I'm going to vote for this only because we're clearing up two parcels of property, and, and then we're done with this. So, you understand where I'm coming from. I'm not, I'm not trying to make you feel bad. I'm trying to give you a little hardcore advice, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any other discussion? All right, voting will now be open. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with two, seven voting yes, two voting no, and one voting present. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the City Council this evening? You, Alderman Williams, you have unfinished business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, um, and this is right on what we're speaking on. Where do I start? Uh, so I have a ordinance that's tabled, uh, that deals with what, kind of what we're talking about in a sense. Because that was my way of thinking of how I could start fixing, uh, uh, this situation. Then I got some inspiration out of, um, Alderman, Alderwoman Conley, when she referred to, oh, there may be an ordinance coming on infrastructure, which, 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 which I'm starting to feel very hopeful, Mayor, that this ordinance that you're going to propose will help us address exactly what we just spent the last forty-five minutes talking about. When, when, when I got on the council, uh, I always thought of these things that, uh, Alderwoman, uh, Jennifer, because I can't say her last name, talked about. I always have, um, wanted to fix my, my houses and my abandoned houses, my. So, I, you know, went to that, we started with Calvin Pits, and we had this. Then, as a council, in my mind, I think we just got distracted and used something else, and we killed it. Then I came up with this landlord registration. I think it was really misunderstood. But again, I was told what we were going to look at was already on the books. And then we're going to try to fix some of this, Mayor. We're going to try to, to put something together and, and make things go forward. In the meantime, I think people like, like the gentleman, um, like the three that I ran out of council last week and went and stopped, three, in Pillsbury, working away, I said, don't spend another penny. Don't do it. We, we, we can't do it. And yes, I know we're all on this, let's fix our neighborhood kick. We finding these cheap houses, we doing all these things. But to me, all these things I'm naming just shows that this council hasn't yet understood that we need a policy, that we need to address vacant lots, abandoned homes, homes that have been walked away, and it's spreading. It is, you, you guys say it's in your ward now, but it's going to get you your ward at a level like it is in three, two, four, five, and six, probably. I mean, our city mayor needs something done with. I, okay, let's not call landlord registration. Let's call whatever you guys are comfortable with. But we have to put something in place to assist these people to not just fix up these homes, or we fix them ourselves. If not, um, then, um, Public Works is going to have to just do a big demolition and get rid of them to solve a lot of problems. Everything from homelessness to the ugly eyesores to all this. So, I say this in new, old business to say, um, that ordinance has been sitting there. And, and, and I know the votes ain't there for it, but it doesn't have to be called landlord registration. I'm ho- and hoping that what you are coming up with is going to help address pretty much what, uh, Ward Six, Alderwoman has said, and what I've been saying, and, and others have been saying are in your ward, just in a different form. You know, it may not be an individual house. It may be a building in Ward Nine and, and Eight and things like that. But we have a problem with these landlords, these homeowners, and this situation. And we should let nothing, nothing stop us as aldermen and alderwomen from fixing it. We, we, we have to get dedicated enough to fix it and quit saying, well, we're going to study it. Well, we're going to do this with it. Because that status quo creates these situations where the citizens start taking on things that they really don't have the, the capacity or the, the ability mentally to even deal with, you know, the, the, the law and the logistics to really do it the proper way. So, I'm just begging this council to finally say, yeah, we're going to do something in this area. I, I appreciate any help I can get, but we need to move on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Donlin, you have unfinished business?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thanks. It's actually a response to Alder Williams' comments. And I appreciate where you ended up. But, you know, to get to the ordinance that's tabled, that's a landlord registration ordinance. That's what it does. That would not have resolved this issue. That would not have resolved the issue we're experiencing in Ward Nine and Ward Eight and probably everywhere else. Because we know who all those landlords are. We know who all those property owners are. We, we, I mean, there's no secret. There's no, there would be no need. Having a registration wouldn't have changed anything. So, hearing you, hearing you speak about, and others have in the past, about, you know, we know we have this problem, we're very clear about it. But we need to do something different. Because I am, and, and, and I, and I'm just going to say it, I am just sick and tired of our neighborhoods having to deal with these issues. And I know we all are. And, uh, so, whatever it takes, I'm willing to work with you or whomever, uh, because it has to be done differently. But a landlord registration wouldn't have changed any of these situations because we know darn good and well who those owners are, and we've known for a long time. Thank you.
Alderman Williams, you have signed up to speak?
Well, yes, so, so, I, I, I appreciate that. But we do know, we don't know where a lot of them are, too. That's our difference in our experiences, I guess. Because in my ward, I have a lot who have walked away from homes. They're, they're not there. We can't find them. I have them that are deceased. I have them in jail. So, we don't know who all the, all the men, and the tax records does nothing for me. But you also heard me say, I'm willing not to call the landlord registration. Alderwoman Conley said, we need to get rid of some of them. Okay, maybe we take that out, get rid of it, but let's do something. Call it what you want, what you're comfortable with. But we, we have to start making some kind of moves to, to fix these issues. That's all I'm saying. So, I don't think we're far off. I think we're hung up on words. And like I said, it don't have to be called landlord registration. But it's got to be called something, and it's got to fix, uh, abandoned homes. It's got to fix, uh, you know, the decaying homes and to stop some of these situations from happening. And not just the homes. I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to address the lots, too. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business to come before the council? Any new business to come before the council? Do you want me to go first? I have two things. One, um, I'm, I've been asked by Sangamon County to talk about a food box replacement program that the county has for eligible households through their Community Services Block Grant Program. So, you would have to show eligibility. There is a food box valued at a hundred dollars meant to help replenish perishable food items that were lost during the Drex show storms. You can go to the Sangamon County Resources office at twenty-eight thirty-three South Grand Avenue East, and they are taking applications August third, fourth, seventh, and eighth from eight-thirty AM to four PM to issue a voucher. Sangamon County Community Resources said that this partnership is with local grocery stores, which include Ruler Foods, Humphreys Market, and Hy-Vee to reach this program. So, that's just a food replacement program that you do have to qualify for. Tomorrow evening, the Levitt Amp Series is its final night, starting at six-thirty PM. And unfortunately, our Alderwoman was the sponsor tonight for the made-up concert from the storms. And yours truly is the sponsor tomorrow night, so I'll be there.
I was just told I'll be speaking with you a little bit.
Oh, there we go.
I got, I missed out on my time.
I am happy to share the stage with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other new business? Alderman Gregory?
I just want to say, um, um, you know, on top of Levitt, I, I'm glad you guys spoke on that. It's, it's a, a great space in Ward Two, and, and, uh, I, I do plan on coming tomorrow and enjoying that with everyone. But I wanted to speak on a, uh, not only national night, I, it was really, really good. And it was, it's growing in our particular community, for sure. Um, and I was happy to see that, happy to see the families out with our officers and firefighters and, and really growing. And, and, you know, simultaneously, or at the same time, we had a, um, the last night of, um, the partnership between, um, the city of Springfield, um, the Springfield Park District, and as well as a, a, um, a group, a young man, um, who runs a, uh, brand called Applying Pressure. And, um, they gave out about hundreds of bikes, um, teamed up with local businesses throughout the city. The kids really enjoyed the new pump track over there. And it was really, really beautiful to see in our community. Um, it was, it was part of, um, our summer youth, um, programming at Cox Park. And I, I just wanted to salute those who carry it out. They hosted on Tuesday, so I have not been able to make it. But I, I just wanted to, um, you know, give them a shout out, a job well done. This last, uh, night was the last night, um, before it. Um, and, and, you know, I want to work with you all on keeping that going in that park. That park has become, um, the hub, so to speak, um, on the east side. Where, where many, many families are, are hosting events, um, Grooves, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Salvation Army. And there's something always going on, uh, along with, you know, health and fitness. There's a workout, um, there, we have really totally almost rehauled, or redone, you know, uh, Comer Cox Park. And I just wanted to salute those individuals and, and thank, especially the park district for really being a willing partner for us. Thank you.
Any other new business? Citizens had signed up to address the council. We had a James Fulmer, and I understand he's not coming now this evening, so we don't have James Fulmer. Uh, is Charles McCaffrey in the audience this evening? And I noticed Alice Ramey left, so she is not here to speak either. Jamie Tool, are you here this evening to speak? So, last but not least, James Johnson, I do see you.
You guys see my name up there? Missy, Mayor, I'm, I'm going to talk directly to you. I'm a little perturbed about some things. We have history around this council. We have three blacks, I want to say about four women. And it's, it's disturbing, the relationship over here, over. I'm not going to call no names, but Ward Three would be a good start on where my conversation is going. As a black male, and I'm not the only one, but, um, we're a little disappointed in what's happening. It's embarrassing as a black male that we have history and we can't seem to get along for the good of our community. And thank God this young man is here, kind of, kind of fits my whole story of if we was all working together, we might have gave him some information that he wouldn't have to go through all that. And that's what we need from our aldermen. It's a lot of back and forth, and a lot of people see it, and it's not becoming. And the whole minorities on construction jobs. Now, I've been around for a long time. I'm one of the OGs to all those brothers and sisters right there. Now, I've been around for a long time. I'm one of the OGs to all those brothers and sisters right there. We family. But nobody's come to us and asked questions. Ward Two did a little bit. But I find it weird and funny that now you concerned about blacks on jobs. But I ain't never seen a person at this podium in all the years you've been in Springfield. Why are we always talking about construction and minorities on construction? We need to be talking about it on a whole lot more other areas. Now, that man that was standing here, he been here two times. And I remember him being called out his name behind closed doors and on the phone, but he didn't get addressed that. So, I'm wondering if you really being two-faced or double-talking. But my point is things that is being said and talked about, this voting present. If you're not working or at a job where this voting, then we're going to look at you as voting no because present, you know, doesn't mean anything for us. Don't be a coward and vote present when you really feel a certain way. Now, here's some things that should be talked about that I'd love for my aldermen to be addressing. One, no blacks on the CWLP lineman crew. How about we talk about that? No black females on the fire department. Let's talk about that. Put a pin there. Now, let's watch the construction. I'm going to be quiet from now on until I watch that construction and I'm going to see who going to be the first one because I already know what's going to happen on those jobs. I know. I've been in the longest. I can tell you how everything going to go. But don't nobody come and ask us. But, but see, I care about my community. I'm going to come up here and tell it. I'm going to come up here and say it. How about we talk about tenant windows on public service vehicles? Way too many CWLP trucks with tenant windows. Way too many police cars with tenant windows now. Now, let me, let me state my reason why I think it's too bad. Because in the construction zones, which is going to be a whole lot of them here in the near future, the young men that are sitting here, standing out there in that street can't really see inside if you paying attention to them. You don't realize how dangerous that is because most people aren't paying attention to us. They're on the phones. But nobody's talking about all these tenant windows. And pretty soon, you're going to want to raise our CWLP rates. I don't want my rates raised as long as I keep seeing tenant window vehicle because obviously, we got money somewhere, but it ain't there. So, another thing we should be worried about and talking about as aldermen in our community, our young adults, what are you doing for our eighteen-to-twenty-year-old? Where are they going? What do they have? That's a concern. Now, I'm going to finish up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to finish up, Mayor. Because this one, this was, this was really bothering me and it's really bothering the community. And I just want to say that some of this. Lakeisha, you keep doing what you doing. And the more the words of Tupac, keep your head up. And some of us need to listen to Tupac because we need to start respecting our women. And if we need a horseshoe full of women, then we'll get that. We'll have to do that. We've got to show a little more respect. I don't know why you didn't sign it, but you need to show more respect. Now, there's an old saying. You live in, don't throw rocks if you live in a glass house. And I'm going to leave that there.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Gregory, you signed up to speak?
I just want to, you know.
Alderman Gregory, sorry.
It's all good. That was Sean. Mr. Johnson, you know, we haven't talked for some time and, you know, we was talking outside a little bit. We didn't get to finish. Because I, because I felt like it was important, you know, to, to, to move on for our community. So, a couple of things, you know, I take a little offense with. And you, you're not really even talking to me, but, um, you know, we, we, we sit up here and we look for equity in every corner of society. We talk about it a lot. The things that you're talking about, youth, and we, we, we put a lot of things on the table. Sometimes you miss it. And sometimes people miss it. You know, you, 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 you know, there's five of us up here that was unopposed and I'm one of them. So, you know, I'm working hard for our community. You've seen things in our community that y'all ain't seen in fifty years. So, I'm working hard. I'm working with, you know, the, the man who, who, who made this council here. So, I helped form this council here. So, you know, sometimes you, you come off a little aggressive, bro. And, 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 you know, you say some things like, you know, how we vote.
Passionate.
I'm passionate too. So, you know, when you come up with that stuff and he can vote how he wants to vote, I can vote how I want. Everybody can vote up here like that, but we're not cowards. We ain't cowards, dawg. And that's, uh, hear me, hear me out. Hear me out. I'm listening. Because easily, any one of us could say, well, we're offended by that and we're going to bar James out. You see what I'm saying? Because there ain't nobody up here no cowards. We grown men and women. We have the right. We earned this right through our communities in voting. We have an opinion and we should be able to speak it without fear of somebody coming to come at us or disruption and all that stuff. You know, come on, fam.
That's how a lot of citizens feel.
But I, 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 see, this is the thing. When I'm up here, I got the mic and I get to talk. That's all I'm saying. I don't mind you coming up here speaking your piece. People come up here, chew us out. Sometimes we speak on it, sometimes we don't. But we ain't never no cowards. That's, they ain't good words. Those are not respectable words. I wouldn't let you say that about anybody up here. Last time I was up here, you know, somebody made a joke about how black I was. I didn't see you run up here and say nothing. Alderwoman No-Toronto was the first one called me. She was so disturbed by it and I thanked her for it. But I said, no big deal. People called me. I'm like, oh, you shouldn't let her say that. It's young kids out here that's, you know, struggling with how black they are. I enjoy being this black. I call it my earth tone, brother. So, so we are all fighting, trying to make sure that every corner of that we touches has, has equitable and fairness to it. Sometimes that, that's where the fights come from because we always looking for it. We always looking for it. We always looking for it. And people take it the wrong way. It's always been that way. But, but truly and genuinely, and I've shown it, I just want to work together with people and still be able to sit up in their faces and say, hey, this is what I stand for. And they can tell me this is what they stand for and then we can come and make a deal. That's how I've been successful. So, just, you know, when you come up here, be respectful too, you know? And, 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 you know, you talked about signing things and this and that. You know, we may have not felt like, like that. However, we here, I respect our mayor. I've known her longer probably than you. So, just, you know, be, be, be a little respectful if it's on the mayor's. That's our choice.
I get a chance to respond?
Just keep it short, if you would. We still have executive session tonight.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, well, with the word coward, I, I'm not going to call anybody around this horseshoe a coward. But when it comes to voting present or just saying no, what I've been used to and what I've known, like if she works for somewhere and it has something to do with the job, the alderman would vote present. But if you against something, you shouldn't vote present. This is my opinion. But this is what I've seen over the years because I've been around here longer than you have. So, when you vote present, it's for a reason. But when you don't vote no and you really stand against something, then what am I, what else am I to think? And that's what I'm going to think. Now, I got respect for everybody around this horseshoe. I call you by your name, your first name. I don't call you out of your name. But I know some people around this horseshoe or one person around this horseshoe that calls my BA out of his name. And I probably get called out of my name too. But I still come up here and talk respectfully.
You know, we get called out our names too.
Yeah, and I'm, but I'm still talking.
Like, really?
But I'm going to keep coming and speaking as long as I got breath because some things need to be said and heard. Because sometime I feel like, you know, really, everybody ain't, you, since you're in my ward, you ain't listening to everybody. You're just listening to what you want to hear, you know? And some of us are disappointed. And some of us are talking and grumbling about what's going on. And we want a little more respect going that way around the horseshoe. And that's, that's all I can ask for. So, we can all work together for the good of our community and not just for what certain people want. Because I don't come up here and ask for nothing though.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Purchase, did you want to speak to Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Thank you for definitely addressing the elephant in the room. And the storm is what saved me from reading the letter that I wrote to speak up here about disrespect that I feel that goes on. Like you stated earlier, there's history. I even felt like, you know, Alderman Gregory was taking a jab at me tonight. But he said, he apologized and it wasn't meant with that intent. And so, I do think we're moving in the right direction. We're definitely divided between us three. And that is, everybody knows it up here. I've had multiple colleagues reach out to me after city council is over with to see if I'm okay. They've addressed it up here and I want to work with both of my colleagues. Today showed how we can work together. I put my feelings aside because they've been voting against my stuff and voting present and voting for me to be on commissions. But this gentleman came here and what he said today made us work well together. And that was for the common good. Like you stated, me and Sean could have been talking to him. I, Sean knows that I flip properties. I got rental properties. It's no secret. He could have had him to talk to me and ask for some advice or something. So, we can work together and I think tonight was an example of that. And I do hope, and I'm looking at you, Alderman Gregory, I do hope that we still got three more years to be working together up here. And now should be the start where we can at least even speak to each other. We don't even speak to each other when we come into this council, this chamber. That doesn't make me feel good at all.
And we see it. And we see it in community. And that's why I'm speaking on it.
I'm going to say this one time.
We're going to just pray that we keep building on it and that's where I want to go. That's fine, James. There was a time that you had a problem with. But I, I'll say this, right? We get emotional sometimes. We're going to say what we're going to say. We're going to disagree. I don't disagree with Ralph, me and my, my, I talk to him a lot. You know, bang on the window when he was upset at me because he felt like I let Nick Miller get one off of him. And we still talk every day. Ain't no big deal. Alderwoman Purchase, I don't have a problem with you. I think, I think, I think I showed my willingness to, to put aside anything. You know, you talk about things that you vote against. I just spoke on what we do in, in Cox Park and you voted against that. You voted against broadband, which is, which is helpful for your ward as well. So, yeah, we took a little offense to it. I've been over that. I've been working. But I'm glad we're talking about this. I'm glad we're talking about this. Because we don't have to be friends or jumping up and down with each other to come in here and do the right things. Nobody got to like me. I ain't got to like anybody else. But I'm going to come here. I'm going to do the right things for the people of this city. I've shown it with kids in. Then we come back. We do some unorthodox things that some people say. But guess what? I didn't recall the vote, change my vote or nothing because it was the right thing to do against my brother, who I love. He was mad as, mad as heck at me. But so, I, I always take good votes and tough votes. Votes that I shouldn't probably be in, but I'm trying to understand things. So, so the disagreements that we have, we just have different interests. We just have different interests. We just have different styles of going about things. No problem. I don't have no problem with you. I do speak with you. We handing out food together. I try to be things, but everybody want to make me look, look, look crazy or this angry black man. So, I'm working on that portion of it. But I am always going to speak my mind on the things that I would like to see on this council. And with that said, let's have a good night. Go to executive session.
I want to thank all of you for being so civil in your discussion.
Thank you. See what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
It's all good.
I, I understand what you're saying, Sean. I'm not trying to get the last word. I understand what you're saying, but you just made a valid point. There's other people that you passionate about and you talk to them every day. Like you said, we don't have to talk, but it just makes it look bad in the community. And that's just something I'm telling you I want to work on. It's not going to happen overnight, but I would like to work on it and we got three years to do it.
Well, let's work, sister.
Amen.
Can I get a motion to go to executive session?
So, move.
And a second? All those in favor?
What purpose?
Oh, I'm sorry. The purpose is for Personnel Matters. To see one.
So, move.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. I'll give you a few minutes. No, you're not getting a few minutes. That's a lie. All right. We have most everyone in here. Oh, we have to have the clerk. We have to have the clerk so we can get the motion to adjourn. Y'all are waiting for the clerk. So, I have a majority.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Alderman Williams was the first and the second was Alderman Donlin. We're adjourned.
Aye. Frank?
Aye. I voted aye to adjourn.
Thank you.